Later, right? That comes up at C, so we'll do that at C. So Commissioner Mayor.
Present.
Commissioner Benson.
Present.
Commissioner Freitas.
Present.
Commissioner Lazar.
Present.
And future Commissioner Kraft.
Present.
Thank you.
Sort of.
Commissioner Benson will lead us in the salute to the flag. Thank you.
And Chair Mayor, I have an oath of office for you also, apparently.
Oh. Okay, can we do them both at the same time? I will both state our name and I can read them. Do you need to do them separately?
I probably need to administer yours first, so then you could administer the one for Michael.
Sounds good.
Okay. So if you could raise your right hand, please. And I state your name.
Meredith Mayer.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California and the Charter of the City of Eureka, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter in the capacity of Commissioner for the Planning Commission of the City of Eureka. Please state that you will or you will affirm.
I will.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft, we're gonna repeat that process. So I state your name.
Michael Kraft.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California and the Charter of the City of Eureka, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter in the capacity of Commissioner for the Planning Commission for the City of Eureka.
I will.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard, Michael Kraft.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the approval of minutes. You can make a motion, yeah.
I will make a motion to approve the rescheduled Planning Commission meeting minutes of February 22nd, 2022. I see. I will make a motion to approve the rescheduled Planning Commission meetings of February 22nd, 2022. May the force be with you.
I'll second. All right. Take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Freitas.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lazar.
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft.
All abstain.
Okay, and Commissioner Mayer.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Move on to oral communications. If anyone in the public has anything they would like to discuss that is not on the agenda, they can come forward and do that now. Thank you, we have no continued public hearings and we can move to the new public hearing. Panthenon Group Cannabis. Panthenon. Panthen- yeah. Pantheon? My apologies.
Great, thank you. Share my screen. Okay, so my name is Caitlin Castellano, Senior Planner, assigned to this project. So the project before you for your consideration tonight is the Pantheon Group Multi-Use Commercial Cannabis Facility Project, where the applicant, Michael Willison, of the Pantheon Group seeks approval of a conditional use permit for commercial cannabis cultivation, a minor use permit for non-volatile manufacturing, a coastal development permit for the use permits and an environmental document presented to seek with the California Environmental Quality Act. So here's our standard, or its I view for the subject property is located in the context of the city limits. Here we are zooming in even closer. The project site is surrounded by commercial and light industrial uses. Directly to the north are industrial storage yards and the Hill Ficker Pipe Company. And directly to the east is Broadway, Highway 101, and across Broadway is the southern end of the Ocean View Cemetery. Directly to the south is a commercial auto detailing shop and gas station. And directly to the west is the Northwestern Pacific Railroad Right-of-Way. And west of that is our, excuse me, mapped wetlands and an industrial storage yard and the Humboldt Bay Fire Training Facility. Then beyond that is the mouth of the Elk River adjacent to the North Bay Channel of Humboldt Bay. So the project site is located in the coastal zone. It has a general services commercial GCS land use designation as a service commercial zone district. There are coastal industrial zoning as well as general industrial zoning nearby. And then you see the kind of lighter blue strip to the left west of the project site. That is public zone and that's for the Northwestern Railroad Right-of-Way. And then also there's a tiny little portion of the property in the Northwestern Corner Zone Natural Resources, but it is completely paved and not part of the project. So zooming in even closer, the proposed project is located in Building A and then also within the southern portion of Building B. So the applicant proposes two cultivation areas under two separate cultivation licenses within Building A. On the first floor, cultivation area license one would include two cultivation rooms and a propagation room with a total gross floor area of 2,893 square feet. On the second floor, or they propose a second floor mezzanine for cultivation area license two, which would house two cultivation rooms with a total gross floor area of 2,520 square feet. Within the southern portion of Building B, the non-volatile cannabis manufacturing operations would occupy approximately 1,276 square feet. And the project proposes to use ethanol in the non-volatile extraction proper- operations with within a self-contained 290-square-foot extraction booth, which is specially engineered to maintain safety during the ethanol extraction process. The southern portion of Building B is also proposed to house the principally permitted distribution use. And other site improvements include parking lot striping, fencing, security lights, and a mechanical yard, which will house odor control equipment, a water tank, and a secure trash enclosure. So some required approvals by the Planning Commission. So the two proposed indoor cultivation areas require conditional use permit. The non-volatile manufacturing use requires a minor use permit. As I stated before, the distribution use is principally permitted. And the conditional and minor use permits trigger the need for coastal development permit. Also, the project site is a North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board cleanup site, so the project did not qualify for a CECL exemption such as the existing facilities exemption that's often used. So therefore, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared. A mitigation monitoring and reporting program was prepared, which was the last attachment in the initial study mitigated negative declaration and a response to comments and errata, which will need to be adopted as well. So there are some updates to the ground disturbance that was in the staff report and in the initial study. Initially, the site plan and initial study indicated trenching to connect to sewer and water facilities would require 22.24 cubic yards of excavated material, which is about 600 square feet. It would 6.74 square feet west of Building A. And then there was 15.5 cubic yards, excuse me, to connect between Building A and B there. They have now are proposing 28.24 cubic yards, yards 762 square feet. And instead of the middle trenching, it'll be trenching between Buildings B and C to connect to the sewer line to the north. And so that is a six-cubic-yard increase, 162 square feet. Condition two in the resolution requires the applicant implement the initial study mitigated negative declarations, mitigation monitoring and reporting program, the MMRP, which requires adherence to the soil and groundwater management plan that was approved by the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board for any and all ground disturbing activities, no matter the location on site. There is, it's my understanding that there are, although there are some contamination left in the soil, it is all underneath standard. Excuse me, my. Detectable screen levels, there we go. It meets detectable screen levels for commercials. So it's, you know, the remediation on the site has been completed, but there is a little bit on-site. Thus, anytime there's any ground disturbance, they need to follow the site, I'm sorry, soil and groundwater management plan for any ground disturbing activities. And the called the S GMP, and it does include testing protocols for the soil and groundwater and requires notification to the water board. So anytime they're digging up anything, they're gonna have to test it, send it to the water board. And before they even do that, they have to notify the water board, which is also included in the recorded land use covenant. This was the question that came up of the public comment or that you received today. Also, the mitigation monitoring and reporting program does require the applicant to retain a qualified archaeologist to monitor the trenching for tribal cultural resources. Therefore, the additional ground disturbance does not change the initial study mitigated neg- deck's determination that with adherence to the site, the soil and groundwater management plan and cultural monitor mitigation measures, the project will not have a significant effect on the environment. That's a mouthful, sorry. Consequently, staff does recommend the commission adopt errata with changes to the ground disturbance estimates. So the project operations are proposed into existing industrial warehouse buildings, which are surrounded by other commercial and light industrial uses. So it is not anticipated to impact coastal resources, especially with adherence to the conditions of approval. The nearest offsite mapped wetland is approximately 150 feet south of Building B. And there's vegetation associated with the wetland at approximately 80 feet south, which is adequate to protect environmentally sensitive areas with adherence to the conditions of approval, such as implement adherence to the soil and groundwater management plan for utilities trenching, which I just talked about. Also, they are conditioned to prepare and implement a construction phase erosion sediment control plan, which will prevent more construction waste debris of contaminants from entering the stormwater system or leaving the property and entering the nearby wetland. They also need to complete a hazardous materials business plan and submit that to the county Environmental Health Division if non-volatile manufacturing uses handle handles hazardous materials at any one time over a set quantity. They are also required to ensure that any new exterior lighting is shielded and downward facing to reduce ambient waste, waste ambient light and be dark sky compliant, which will further limit potential impacts to the nearby wetlands as a result of nighttime light. Furthermore, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife did issue a no effect determination through the CECL review process, indicating the project and proposed mitigation measures will have no effect on fish, wildlife, or their habitat. Therefore, the existing buffers to nearby wetlands created by the adjoining commercial development as well as the conditions of approval are sufficient to protect the adjacent environmentally sensitive areas. The site is also in a flood zone. The city's local coastal program is concerned with minimizing risk to hazard. So the western boundary of the subject property is approximately 440 feet from the Elk River Spit shoreline. And a portion of subject property is and a very small portion of Building A is located in the FEMA mapped high-risk flood plain, also called a special flood hazard area. So access to the site is via Broadway and is outside of the flood plain. The proposed improvements will not exacerbate or increase flood hazards since operations will occur within existing warehouse structures with minimal site improvements. The applicant did submit evidence to show the proposed tenant improvements within the high-risk flood zone do not constitute a substantial improvement as defined by our code using special criteria in our code and is therefore exempt from needing a flood development permit for their tenant improvements. More information of that is in the Section 4.10 Hydrology and Water Quality in the ISMD in the attachments. Also, it's in a tsunami hazard area. So the project is conditioned to require the applicant's to mitigate tsunami safety plan to ensure safe evacuation of future occupants. So the recommendation for these reasons presented in the presentation and included in the staff report and the environmental document, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and adopt a Planning Commission resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration, mitigation monitoring and reporting program and response to comments and errata with changes to the ground disturbance estimate and approve the project with conditions. And here is a long suggested motion. It's a mouthful. I can stop screen sharing, though, right now while you deliberate. And I can go back to it when you're ready to take action. And myself and the applicant and the applicant's agent are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners have questions for staff?
Caitlin, do you have an exhibit detailing the revised ground disturbance associated? You said it was between B and C. C would be not one of the buildings that's part of the project, correct?
Correct. Here, I can, I can show you the site plan, but I can also, if you want, if you want me to screen share again, let me really quickly share this. Oh, of course, it doesn't wanna, here we go. So initially, it was between A and B. And then this was the first, this is to connect to sewer right here. And then now they are not proposing the trenching between the two buildings, but instead trenching, yeah, from this, from, I guess, the southern, eastern side of Building B all the way up along between the two buildings to the sewer at the top.
So will Building A not be connected to sewer?
It is. So if you look in the up, this upper left-hand corner, can you see my little mouse circling it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is to connect, that's a sewer line right here. So the Building A will connect to the sewer line here. And then Building B will connect to the sewer line here. And then the applicant has worked out a plan to connect. So there's water, I guess, at the southern portion of C. And they're gonna do a dry utilities above the ground between the two buildings. And they're gonna have, we talked to the building official and he said that's fine as long as light can't get in and it will be destroyed, you know, by some natural disaster. But it sounds like the water will be connected arially between the two buildings. So there's no ground disturbance for water.
Okay, and can you confirm? I read in the staff report, but I wanna make sure I understood this correctly. So time and tide, the tenant that is occupying Building B on the kinda, I guess, the north side.
Yes.
They're still to remain in that building?
Yes. It's my understanding that they're still there. And then in the future, the Pantheon Group may take over the northern part of Building B. And at that time, then there's a condition in there that they would need to amend their use permit and their.
Cause that wasn't, I asked because that wasn't reflected in the MND. It showed, you know, calculations for parking based on all the occupancies happening concurrently as well as the employees. So, so that's not currently proposed? That might be a future change to their.
Yes.
Development, okay.
Yeah, that's my understanding. But right now, it's occupied by the boat repair.
Right, and it wasn't part of the proposal before us tonight?
No.
Correct, okay. So, and then I had a question about the flood regulations and feel free to, if you're not comfortable answering this. But I was confused why we would credit the value of improvements that are not part of the project towards the 10% calculation. And also, for one reason, just because they're not, they're not being improved, the other buildings on the site. But also because they're not in the flood zone, as you can see on the exhibit you have in front right now. So is that, is that ordinary, the way we handle it? When we.
Well, so the, yeah, the calculation has to be to not require a flood. From my understanding, it's, yeah, 50% of. So what we did is they got an estimate for what the whole entire property was per square foot. And then we took Building A and divided that total number by the square. I did a calculation where we were able to focus it just on that building and not on the whole site. And it is reflected in the ISMD and I would have to pull it up.
Okay, I might have misread it, but I remember seeing a total of several million dollars for the improvements.
Yeah, I can see if I can pull it up.
And this is a trigger for flood-proofing the building? Is that essentially what we're, we're talking about as far as the?
Yes. Yeah, if, if it constituted a substantial improvement, they would need a flood development permit. And then, yeah, get what you just said. And now, although there are some improvements in there through the building permit process, they will have to, you know, make sure that those improvements are secure against flooding in that little area, but not through a flood development permit, through the building permit process.
Okay, another question I had, which was with regard to the water quality. I guess, I guess what I was wondering about was you referenced in the MND and in the staff report the soil and groundwater management plan. But we didn't receive that with our packet, right? I don't think we, that wasn't attached to the environmental document. And I guess I'm wanting to make sure that in that plan, there's protocols for ground disturbance that obligate them to do testing of all ground, all soils. I heard you say it in your presentation, but it's not a mitigation measure or a condition of approval on the project. So can you confirm that that is, is a requirement?
Yes. Yes, so the site, the soil and groundwater management plan was linked in the environmental document. So it wasn't an attachment, but there were web addresses and links to it, especially if you were to go to the covenant. Although it was weird, cause the web link wasn't blue like it normally would. But you can get to it through the documents, but it wasn't an attachment. And yes, included in the soil and groundwater management plan is they have to provide notification and the covenant to the water board as well as, yes, soil, testing for the soil. And if they encounter any water, like when they're drained, like if water fills up in the trench and they're draining it, they have to test that as well and submit it to the water board before they either. Like, and so if the soil is clean enough, it can, you know, be put back down. And if it's not, then it gets hauled off. And it's my understanding that, you know, there was about, let's see, 1,250 cubic yards of soil that was removed, which is like 3,000 square feet. And the more, the most recent soil samples near both of where the trenches are gonna go are below acceptable screen levels for diesel and heavy oil. So there is still a little bit, even though it's below acceptable levels. And that's why there's the soil and groundwater management plan that does require the testing, sorry, that you were asking about.
Okay. The other thing I noted is in the VMT, it seemed as though the daily trips you, in the comments or in the, I guess, responses to comments, you were saying that the lunchtime trips were no longer included in the count, that they shouldn't have been. And is that really a realistic thing to exclude? Or what's the basis for that?
I would probably ask Principal Planner Getz to elaborate on that. As I was informed when we were updating that we didn't need. And I think that is city policy. I'll need Principal Planner Getz to elaborate on that.
So Traffic Project Manager Scott Elsmore is the one that indicated that the lunchtime traffic trips should not be included in there. It was just the peak AM and peak PM.
I noted that it's below the threshold you're using. There is no local VMT guidance at this time, other than the technical. Okay, just wanna make sure. Okay, I think that's good for now. I don't wanna, I think that's, that helped me, thanks.
I have a couple of questions as well. Just looking at the flood zone as defined by FEMA and also looking at the tsunami safety zone, I see checks in both those boxes. I'm just curious how this project lines up with more recent guidance that we've received from staff relative to the moderate and high levels of predicted sea level rise? And what's, what are the elevations of this project relative to some of those projections of the future?
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. So we did not, well, I certainly can find out the base flood elevation, but I don't know it off the top of my head because this is reusing an existing building. So we did not need to look at it based on that criteria because it's existing buildings and it doesn't trigger a substantial improvement.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. I'm also, I'm curious, you know, e- even though I understand that the contaminations are below detectable limits is set by the regional board and EPA and others, but it sounds like there, there still are at some detectable level polyaromatic hydrocarbons like diesel and the like. And is there any voluntary remediation of that being considered for the excavated soils here in terms of even, you know, basic aeration and sunlight exposure and possibly fungal treatment for digesting carbon chains with vital remediation and micro remediation? Is there anything, are the applicants gonna do anything with that? If it, even if it's below detectable, or sorry, thresholds?
I don't believe so. If, the water board did recently close this site in June of last year with the approval of the site management plan. So the applicant and the property owner are not required to do any additional remediation. And if there are unacceptable detectable levels, then it, at that time, will be hauled off site. That's my understanding from reading the soil and groundwater management plan.
So it'll all be XC2 treatment as opposed to NC2 treatment if, if it's found?
You know what, the applicant's consultant is here, who I believe they did their remediation work. So they definitely can answer those specific questions.
Okay, thank you.
And I would think that if the Regional Water Quality Control Board had any issues when they were notified about the upcoming excavations, then they would be working with the applicant.
Got it.
Oh, yes, and if I may actually add to that. So the Regional Water Board did get notification referral about this. And then I actually reached out directly to the caseworker and I did speak with him on the phone. And he was fine as long as the use was commercial and industrial and that they followed the site management plan. And also, for example, there was another project on this site closer to the front of Broadway. And we did not issue the building permit until we had in-hand confirmation from the water board that they could proceed. So all the checks and balances are in place to ensure that water board approval does occur before any ground disturbance happens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft, I saw your hand up. Did your question get answered?
It just did. The last thing that Caitlin said answered my question.
I just have a couple of quick things. So just to reiterate, there is a covenant recorded, officially recorded against the property that is requiring the applicants to adhere to testing in the case of any ground disturbance. And that's totally irrespective of this project before us tonight, right?
Correct. That's why it really wasn't included in the conditions of approval. Because it, I mean, it's no matter what hap, you know, any sort of ground disturbance, even if it's not associated with this project, has to follow that covenant.
Right, right. Okay. And, you know, that's a pretty big deal. They don't like put it against your property, you know, lightly. And then the other question was, I know I've seen on some of our staff reports analysis against, you know, our Economic Development Strategic Plan and sort of business-friendly stuff. I don't see it here, which is fine, but it definitely seems like there are real positives from an economic development perspective in terms of redevelopment of sites. And I'm wondering if that's a policy decision to not always include that? Or under what parameters those findings are included?
Yeah, I think I would probably let one of the principal planners answer that question, why it was removed. I think because specifically our code said a specific plan and our economic development plan is, although it's a plan, it's not like a plan required by a government code. Like, we don't follow a government code section. But I'll let Kristen Kenny wants to elaborate on that.
Yeah, it's just not one of the specific findings of approval of a coastal development permit or the types of permits we're looking at tonight. It's not one of the required findings. But there are policies and standards that we looked at that are about the city's tax base and things like that. So we did try to touch on economic development. that are about the city's tax base and things like that, so we did try to touch on economic development.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I always appreciated that, um, element, because it kinda helps to balance out, you know, everything that we're talking about, but I think I understand, thank you. Commissioners, have any other questions?
I remembered one more, so, um, I've asked this to Planner Topoluski, and I guess I'll just ask it tonight, because we are contemplating approving another indoor project. Um, from some of my experience in the county, it seems as though there's always a potential, and it's spoken to in the utilities and service system section of the environmental document. But there's always a potential for nutrient-laden water generation as part of a project like this. But in particular, the salts are problematic is what I've heard. And so having pre-treatment can sometimes be required, or holding things so that they don't all get discharged at once. Um, has there been any coordination with, um, the treatment facility and comments on the project? Are we, do we have a fair, a high degree of confidence that there won't be any further wrinkles to iron out in terms of effluent that gets generated by the operation?
Yeah, uh, when we were preparing the environmental document, uh, the project was presented to our, um, my, I don't know the department name, but to our sewer people, guys. And there is a process in place for for an application for a commercial cannabis discharge permit. Um, and so they do have to explain what their, I think, total nitrogen load is. So I think that there is checks and balances for that as well. But I didn't get a written response from them, although I could check my email. But I did speak with them and had them speak with applicant about it for the environmental document.
Okay, well, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to see what we had on that.
All right, any other questions? All right, we'll put it out to public comment. Generally, the applicant has first opportunity to speak if you would like. Now's your chance to come up. You'll have three minutes. I don't see any hands raised in Zoom unless I'm missing them.
I don't see any.
All right. Back to the commissioners.
Well, I'm. I'll say, this seems like a very good use for that piece of property. Uh, I'm grateful to Commissioner Mayor for saying, always drive to the site and take a look, or always go to the site. Um, so I'm, I'm quite supportive of this.
Yeah, I agree. Looking at the MMRP, it seems like pretty much everything that was considered significant and in need of mitigation was related to soils and ground disturbance. Um, there was some stuff about the tribal historic preservation officers wanting to be involved and some of the stuff related to the water board. Um, but with those issues, I feel comfortable moving forward. I think that there's a good, good protocol in place. So I'm ready to approve when the commission is finished with deliberation. Can you put the motion back up on the screen for us, please?
Certainly, working on that right now. Just do that, so I don't have to click through the whole thing.
Well, I am going to move that we adopt this motion as written.
I thought it was brilliant.
That's very brilliant, I'll second that.
All right, we have a first and a second. Do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Freitas.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lazar.
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes.
And Commissioner Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. Good work.
Thank you, Pantheon, good work.
And we will move on to cannabis code update.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, commissioners. This is Riley Topoluski, Senior Planner. Um, tonight I'm presenting to you a rewrite of our cannabis code. In Eureka, we've been permitting cannabis since twenty sixteen. We adopted our current cannabis code slightly before the state came out with their regulations. So the code we've been, uh, utilizing has been our best guess since that time. Um, for this update, we utilize city staff experience, primarily, uh, Project Manager Swan Asbury, as well as private planning consultant Ben Noble. Uh, Ben also wrote our updated zoning code. Uh, he has a vast amount of municipal code writing experience. Ben and Swan are available tonight to help with, uh, any questions that might pop up. During this presentation, I'm gonna explain why we're doing this, what we've been doing well, our permitting process, and break down the economic impacts of cannabis in Eureka. Then I'm going to go over what we want to improve, what we are changing, and why. Overall, tonight, I'm asking for your input on this proposed code update and for the commission to recommend approval to the updated cannabis code to the city council. Uh, let's start with why we're doing this. We're doing this for a few reasons. Number one, we've learned a lot since twenty sixteen. So if we're gonna go through the effort of improving our code, why not do it the best we possibly can? Number two, we have an opportunity to support the industry on a statewide level. In California, the state follows what a jur- a local jurisdiction does. So if a local jurisdiction doesn't allow cannabis or manages it poorly, it affects the industry. Last year, I went to the League of Cities, the League of California Cities Conference down in Sacramento, and I attended the cannabis session. It was a full room of cities that were interested in allowing cannabis, but weren't sure what to do. We want our code to be excellent so that we can promote it to other cities as an example of what works. Uh, so, things that we've got right. Although we were in uncharted territory in two twenty sixteen, there's a lot we got right. And that will keep the two primary things that are working well and are requirements that include safety measures and odor control. The second is our process. I'm gonna go over both. Uh, currently, we have three different tiers of security requirements dependent on the volume of cannabis a business will have. For example, a testing lab has small amounts of cannabis on site. Their security requirements therefore are less than a large distributor. This tiered system has worked well for us. They, we have not had any security-related issues at any of our facilities. If anything, having businesses with excellent security cameras has helped solve multiple crimes. In addition, generally, the first thing people complain about when it comes to cannabis is the odor. We have a requirement that you cannot have outdoor or have odor outside the walls of your facility. Occasionally, we have an issue and code enforcement checks it out, but for the most part, this policy has worked well for us. And in the end, our cannabis facilities are considered to be good neighbors. The other thing that is working well for us and our, is our process. The first thing that, since the beginning, we've had a dedicated cannabis planner. It started out as Swan, then it was Rob Duhmichelle, and now it's me. Basically, the cannabis planner is the shepherd for a project from start to finish. They are the glue between all the departments and they are primary contact for staff and the applicant regarding a project. So let's pretend someone's interested in starting a cannabis business in Eureka. What do they do? They start by calling and talking to the cannabis planner. We figure out what kind of licenses they will need and where those licenses are allowed in the city. Then they go out looking for a location if they don't already have one. Once they have a tentative location, they have a pre-application meeting with the cannabis planner. We look at the site, see if the desired use is allowed in that zone. Will it require any additional permits such as a use permit or coastal development permit? Is it within six hundred feet of a school, et cetera, and troubleshoot any potential issues? After the pre-app meeting, the applicant is given our application and any additional forms that are needed. I wanna also talk about our application, because while I think it can be improved and updated and will be after the code changes, I still think it works really well and sets the applicant up for success. When we started in twenty sixteen, we didn't have this form. We just asked for information. And what happened is the applicants went bananas. We would get hundreds of pages of information, so we developed this form. It starts with a checklist that we ask the applicant to say they will comply with. And then there are a few essay-type questions where we ask for specific information, such as the quantity of chemicals on site, disposal information, et cetera. Then we ask for four sets of plans, a site plan, a floor plan, an odor control plan, and a safety and security plan. For each of these, we have a sample and a checklist, so that it's really clear what we are looking for. Lastly, we have an emergency contact sheet that is kept on file with the Eureka Police Department, along with the safety and security plan. Okay, so the applicant completes the application, they then submit it to the cannabis planner. The cannabis planner reviews it for completeness, but before it can move forward, a planner from the planning department will process any use permits that are required. All cannabis uses are either principally permitted or conditionally permitted. If a use is conditionally permitted, that means it has to be evaluated depending on the site. Some uses require a conditional use permit, which goes before the planning commission. And some uses require a minor use permit, which is decided by the director. If a use permit, if it requires a use permit, a planner would first process that, because he wants to make sure the use is allowed before you move forward with the license. I know that some of you are familiar, but I'm not sure if you all are, and it's an important thing to understand. So here's an example of the proposed inland use table. Along the top are all of our inland zoning districts. And then we went through and decided which uses we thought should be principally permitted and which should have a conditional use permit, or which should have a minor use permit. All cannabis permit types are available as overlays on our GIS viewer. On the city website, we have a cannabis information section on our layer list. If a potential applicant is looking for a location, they can click the cannabis information box, then select the license type they are interested in and see what parts of town they would be allowed. The viewer has all sorts of helpful information, including types of use permits required, if any, and the six hundred foot buffers around schools. Okay, so after the cannabis planner decides the application is complete and any use permits are taken care of, the application is sent for referral to various departments, then it goes to the cannabis review panel. The cannabis review panel meets every other week, occasionally weekly when needed, and reviews every application together and goes on every inspection together. It includes staff from building, code enforcement, police and fire. We've been meeting together since twenty sixteen, and together we take care of our cannabis program. This proposed code has been reviewed by the panel, and we are all on board with these changes. Okay, so after an application goes to the review panel and is approved, the license can then be issued so that they can apply to the state. They then work on the building permits, and right before they are ready to start operating, the review panel has a final pre-operational inspection. From there, their license needs to be renewed annually, and we occasionally have inspections throughout the year, especially for licenses with chemical extract extraction, which we'll get into later. Now I wanna talk about the economic impacts of the cannabis businesses in Eureka. Currently, we have forty-three cannabis businesses operating in Eureka. In those forty-three businesses, we have eighty licenses issued. A lot of cannabis businesses have multiple licenses. An example would be a manufacturer that also gets a distribution license, so that they can distribute their own products. Currently, we would have to get multiple licenses for this applicant. Under the proposed code, we would let them just get one license. Hold that thought, because I'm coming to talk about that in more detail in just a little bit, but I wanna stay on the economic impacts for a minute. Another important economic impact of these businesses are the jobs they create. We estimate the cannabis employs over two hundred and fifty people in Eureka. Additionally, when a cannabis project goes into an existing building, improvements are required, which ultimately results in a greater inventory of turnkey facilities for whatever project decides to go into the location next. Lastly, the city has received around one point three, one million three hundred and sixty-six thousand in license fee revenue. This revenue is without having a cannabis tax. Okay, so now, uh, finally gonna talk about the code updates. I know that was a lot of background info, but I think it's important for this commission to really know about our cannabis program. Uh, the biggest change to our cannabis code is the number of license types. We currently have thirteen different cannabis license types. We are proposing a streamlining of the current license types down to three. I'm gonna start by talking about the general cannabis use license type. This use would include cultivation, distribution, extraction without chemicals, research and development, and testing. Staff thought process behind this approach is that if the facility has their odor control and safety and security measures in place, that, uh, these are uses that do not concern us, and we want to allow these businesses greater flexibility in their activity. I have a few examples. Recently, a cultivator called and said that they would like to add a metal table to their facility where they could make some bath products, and then he would like to have his wife be able to drive the products to other facilities. Under our current code, that requires adding a non-volatile manufacturing license, a distribution license, and because they are in the coastal zone, the change in use would trigger a coastal development permit. The applicant requested a pre-site visit for us to go over everything, and we were standing there with hundreds of dollars of staff time for some very minor changes that from the outside would be undetectable and be of little or no impact to the surrounding area. Under the proposed general cannabis use license type, this wouldn't happen. The licensee could do any of these uses by simply providing us with an updated floor plan and any building permits that may be required. Another example is a testing lab recently reached out and wanted to add a research and development license. This is a dream for Eureka. This is exactly the types of jobs that we would like to have here. However, part of the research they would like to do would involve having a handful of plants, which means cultivation would have to be allowed in that zone district, which it isn't. So while they can apply for a research and development license, they aren't able to do any of the things they would like to do. What they are interested in doing isn't concerning. Under the proposed general cannabis use licenses, or under the proposed general cannabis use license, this issue would be resolved. We've also made changes to cannabis retail. Currently, retail facilities are licensed differently than our other license types. Applicants must wait until an RFP is released, then can complete to be invited by the city council. During the last RFP process, uh, the city council directed staff to remove the RFP process. And for retail facilities to be licensed like any other license type. The conditional use permit process will be kept to assess a retail facility's application and appropriateness for a neighborhood. Lastly, staff proposes to separate chemical cannabis extraction from the other license types, because due to the volatile nature of the solvents used in the process, more care is required. Originally, we had manufacturing separated into volatile or non-volatile. But depending on the quantity, even non-volatile solvents are dangerous. Also, what we figured out is a lot of concerns are addressed in the building permit process. The concern lies in the volume of the solvents, which can trigger different occupancies. For instance, a lower volume of solvents would require an F occupancy, which has a list of requirements. a list of requirements under the California Building Code. A higher volume of solvents would trigger an H occupancy, which has a much more intense list of requirements. So we don't really need to worry about the volume on the licensing front. It will be handled when the applicant goes through the building permit process. The second big change in the proposed code is the addition of more enforcement tools. In the current code, the main option is to suspend or revoke a license, which we're generally very hesitant to do because it will shut a business down. In the new code, we have more tools in our toolbox. Under the current code, we have a chainsaw in our toolbox. Under the proposed code, we still have the chainsaw, but we also have a Swiss army knife to make minor changes to make things better. Under the proposed regulations, we have options like notices of violation, administrative citations, and other options leading up to suspension or revocation. The last major change is the addition of cannabis events. A couple of years ago, the Santa Rosa Chamber of Commerce offered a behind-the-scenes tour to jurisdictions of the Emerald Cup. The chamber executive director and the mayor, that was their former police chief, gave the tour, and according to city staff and attendants, it was fantastic. It was well organized and safe, and it was good for their city. I'm not saying that we want to have the Emerald Cup in Eureka, but the addition of cannabis events in Eureka could be good for the city as well as the industry. In the proposed regulations, we are recommending that the events be allowed on the premises of a licensed commercial cannabis use on private property that isn't licensed, but isn't in a residential zoning district, and within city facilities or other public property in any zoning district. The temporary cannabis event would require the approval of a temporary cannabis event permit. May require state approval depending on the state's event permitting. And if the event was outdoors on a city street or other public property, it would also require a city-approved special event permit. The standards would require compliance with state law, limited to persons twenty-one years of age and older. The maximum duration would be four consecutive days, and no more than six temporary cannabis event permits may be issued for the same location per calendar year. Lastly, all of these events would need to be approved by the city manager. So that's it for my presentation. What we're looking for tonight from the planning commission is to make a motion to approve or approve with conditions the proposed cannabis code update and to recommend approval to the city council. And with that, we can discuss.
I just do have a question about compliance because it's come up a few times before, and you've mentioned in the past that it's generally just been complaint-driven. Is, I don't see anything included about maybe more regular check-ins with some of these permitted places? Or is that going, or are you going to continue just to be more complaint-driven?
Well, in addition to this code structure, we have a really great code enforcement staff, and they're constantly, every day, doing windshield assessments of any number of cannabis businesses in addition to other businesses. So I have a regularly scheduled weekly phone call with my code enforcement guy, and so we have a little back and forth, and he kind of fills me in on what he's thinking, and we do definitely, as part of the application process, the applicants have to sign off to random unannounced visits. So we periodically do unannounced visits as well.
Thank you.
Sure. Michael?
Hey. I have both a couple of comments and a few questions. Are there, question, are there any changes to the personal use part of the code?
Um, I don't believe so.
Okay. That was how it read to me, too.
Yeah, it's been working pretty good, personal use, and I I think we only have one personal use permit in the city at this time, so I don't think it's, it has reared its head as an issue in any way.
So I definitely want to agree with the points that you made, Riley. I think the city has been a good partner. I think part of the reason that a pop and Berkeley located in Eureka was those early regulations that were clear, took a very good swing, but it is a good time to look at them again. I think the permit simplification is truly helpful. You know, the city has not been a big part of the problem here, but the cannabis industry is in some real trouble. And I would say that kind of goes double for the two ends of the value chain, the cultivators and the retailers in particular. But, you know, all of us, wherever we are in the value chain, feel it, so, you know, any help in simplification and regulatory compliance is help. There's no doubt about it. My last question is, do you define chemical extraction the same as the state defines volatile extraction? Are those synonymous, or are they different?
You know, I'm not really up to speed on all the details of the state's permit program. I know we rely heavily on our fire and building folks to give us that information. I know that, like, certain things like ethanol, you're allowed to have a small amount because it's a common tool used for cleaning instruments and whatnot, I'm sure you're aware. I think the cutoff is maybe fifty gallons, and even that has to be stored in a really proper storage room.
So, yeah, I do think, you know, we have to draw the line somewhere, some interesting choices were made. I would encourage straight, having those in line as possible, just to keep it from getting confusing for the licensees. And appreciate your work on this. That's it.
I just, if I could add also on the retail issue that you brought up before, or the two ends of the cultivation and the retail, with the kind of dire straits the cannabis folks are in these days, I've had a lot of phone calls voicing support for for these code updates due to the fact that if these smaller folks could realize having a retail and realize that markup to the variance, they all seem to feel that they'd have a much more of a fighting chance to make it as a business.
Yeah, as much as Eureka seeks to be the kind of manufacturing, distribution, and testing center, Humboldt County, of course, is a growing center, and the legacy farmers very much are looking for ways to get direct to consumers. So I think the more that we in Humboldt County and the various jurisdictions can support that, the better for that group of people who are just economically critical to us. Thank you.
Yeah, Riley, I have a comment and then just one question. And the comment is, you know, thank you for doing a good job at this. And for, you know, you've been bringing us cannabis-related projects, and we anticipated this, and so you had us well-prepped to review some of this. We weren't starting at zero. And so that was helpful. My question is, is thirteen license types being reduced into the three types, I appreciate that streamlining. But also, reading through it, I see thirteen different types of facilities. And so I'm wondering if the, if, if it seemed like the thirteen license types were related to the thirteen types of facilities, and so license types are reduced. And so does that mean that the thirteen types of facilities are also going to be streamlined in some way? Or just that the three types of licenses will apply to all of them?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm sorry if it was confusing there, but, you know, the license types and the facilities terminology kind of interchange, but the bottom line is to operate, you know, if you wanted to do a non-volatile extraction, add it to your existing cultivation facility, you're still going to have to come in and pull the proper building permits. And like I tell applicants every time I talk to, then the first time I say, you know, a good set of building plans are going to be your best friend because you have to make it through that. The hardest part is making it through the California Building Code approval. So that's why we felt that most of the license types could be streamlined under the general cannabis use type because we're still going to be able to hold them accountable to make the proper improvements as part of the building permit review process. And then the two that we pulled out, retail and chemical extraction, kind of stood out as unique entities within all of our licensing structures. Did that answer your question?
It does. One last question that's indirectly related to this. You mentioned that these cannabis facilities, because of what's required, could become turnkey facilities for other kinds of uses. And I'm just curious, could you give an example of, of, let's say we have a boom and a bust with cannabis, what can these buildings be used for?
Sure, sure. In a lot of our lighter or moderate industrial zones, if somebody wants to do cultivation, for example, they need to get like a three-phase PG&E power drop. That's quite an expensive undertaking, but somebody could easily come in behind them and have a manufacturing facility that, you know, would maybe require the same type of, you know, power needs. And not only that, but every new cannabis facility is a change of occupancy. So when you do a change of occupancy, that's a building department terminology, but it basically triggers all these improvements such as ADA complacency. And then it also triggers improvements within our updated zoning code. You know, things that we might call spruce ups sometimes, you know, sometimes it might be if you're spending over, you know, a certain amount of money on your building improvements, we might require you to do some improvements to your facade, improvements to your landscaping, things that just kind of give the properties a little more curb appeal and just add to a greater inventory of, you know, good-looking buildings.
Thank you.
I have a couple as well. Yeah, first off, I definitely agree with Commissioner Kraft that this is a good thing and a good time to be updating, so thanks for all your hard work. It sounds like they're, you know, is maybe not exact alignment yet with the state license types from Commissioner Kraft's question, and I definitely agree. Aligning that would probably be helpful for the applicants in addition to what's being proposed here. So my question for that piece is, was this draft referred to anyone at the state who's involved with state licensing for review and comment?
Not that I'm aware of. The state has kind of been in flux a little bit. I don't know if you're aware, but they recently went from, maybe Michael can help too. I think they had three, maybe four different or divisions, and now they've recently streamlined into one Department of Cannabis Control. And I've instantly noticed an improved performance when, you know, emailing or waiting for interaction with state staff. But Swan, did you have anything to add to that?
I just wanted to mention, from the beginning, I feel like the state has made this a really complicated process. But however, the state seems to really follow what a local jurisdiction does. And so we have an opportunity here to be really reasonable in what we choose to do. And I think the state will follow our lead. And far as like the volatile solvent, we really went by what Public Health and Humboldt Bay Fire would want instead of following the state. It seems like most of our applicants have issues on the state side, and we try to be as accommodating as possible. But that seems to have been the norm so far.
Yeah, and then to add to that, I just, I found it pretty surprising when I stepped into this position that, you know, the state kind of is looking to us to be the lead on the majority of things that they look to for their, you know, when they're asking us if we can, you know, vouch, or can we give an applicant a state license. They don't move until we say that they're in compliance. And then also to relate a recent story, our code enforcement guys, like I mentioned earlier, they're really adamant and keep a close eye on things. And just, you know, recently, the state has been coming around and they've been coming to town occasionally and working with our code enforcement guys and going on some inspections. And they really voiced a lot of support and praise for our code enforcement team and just said that they go to other jurisdictions that, you know, but sometimes, you know, there's no code enforcement to speak of. So I think the state and the city of Eureka are really starting to work a lot better together because, for example, if we go out on a code enforcement, just the city of Eureka, we don't have any access to like their track and trace information, so it's really kind of hard for code enforcement folks to get an accurate handle of what's what's going on with books or transactions, which is kind of the crux of what could go wrong with these businesses. So recently, the state has been working with us a little more in that regard. And like I mentioned earlier, since the state has streamlined into one organization, it just seems like everybody's kind of speaking the same language now.
Yeah, great. That's all super helpful. Thank you. And in terms of safety, it does make sense to defer to fire and building and others locally in terms of what's legitimately a hazard. And in terms of streamlining, this definitely seems like a good step in the right direction, so that's great. I just had one other question about the definition of city facilities. Would that include parks, city parks?
Oh, you mean for like the events?
Correct, yeah.
I think it would. I think that it would because we, I think we consider that, you know, a city-owned property, so.
Okay, yeah, that was my read on it, too, but I'll bring that up again in discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, once again, we're you know, we're breaking new ground here, so just like our code started off, you know, we made our best effort, and now we're revising it. That's kind of how we see this event section going as well, so there's going to be some growing pains. Yeah.
Can I make a follow-on question to the events? I guess here's my question is, will there be screening of the people who are invited or who apply to be part of the events? Are they going to be these local businesses that have licenses in town? Or will those events be open to any, you know, any producers, basically, whether they're licensed or not? Reason I bring this question up is, you know, I was reading in Ganjapreneur magazine, the Emerald Cup, forty-seven percent of the entrance didn't pass the basic chemical screening for that last, it was an event a couple of years ago, but there's, you know, there's still a lot of product that has a lot of pesticide content, et cetera. And so I'm just wondering, that's what's driving this question, is there some, is there an A-list, or are these events going to be limited to people who are licensed in Eureka? Or is that not known yet?
Well, it sounds like, from my understanding, that the state also has some standards for events. But, yeah, we definitely don't want any of that, you know, bad stuff getting in. I don't know if we have a mechanism in our current rendition, but we would definitely want to, you know, that just seems to me like how the state operates now. If things aren't testing at a certain level, you have to destroy them. If things aren't testing at a certain level, you have to destroy them. So I don't see why would we allow them at the festival or at an event. I don't see that happening. But you bring up a good point.
I think I can speak to that a little bit. The state offers two different license types when it comes to events. One's for a promoter that does multiple events a year, and then they offer like a one-off type of license. But no event's gonna happen, my understanding. Regardless of if we write it into the code or not, it won't happen without a state license. If there's going to be people assembled, cannabis consumption, cannabis sales. So someone will take responsibility for holding the event, whether they're a local operator or someone from out of town. And then usually what happens is there's sort of a pop-up dispensary that occurs and then transactions are funneled through a single point with everybody who's bringing product. It's already gone through testing and packaging. They're not bringing just raw material. So it has to play by the rules, whether it's sold at the proper wellness center or, you know, the event. It doesn't land at the event without going through that whole chain of custody.
And that makes sense as the state kind of handles that portion of the industry around here for us as well through the track and trace stuff, yeah.
Is it stated in the code that they'll have to have then the state permit to be able to get a city permit to do these events?
Yeah, yeah, we have some statement. Let's see if I can find it real quick. Compliance with state law, a temporary cannabis event must comply with sixteen CCR 5601 Temporary Cannabis Event License and other applicable state laws and regulations.
I guess I had a question, Riley. Just, we did get some late comments. This was originally, correct me if I'm wrong, this was like a director report, but it was on the meeting that we had to punt. So we got comments from, or there was interest in comment from the Humboldt County Growers Association. Have we received anything from them? Were they aware of tonight's meeting? Because this is sort of a continue. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, the meeting was definitely, it's a public hearing. It was duly noted. And proper notification was made. I believe the comment from the HCGA had to do with the frequency of events. In our code, in our proposed code update here, we're calling for no more than six temporary cannabis event permits maybe issued for the same location per calendar year. And from what I understand, they wanted to see that number go away and be maybe unlimited.
Thanks. And I do have some items for discussion, but I'd rather leave it for that part, so.
Okay, I guess it doesn't look like there's anybody here to make quibble comment. Am I missing anybody on Zoom? Then we come back. It's discussion time, my friend.
Okay, I'm happy to start off. I guess I always forget to, I always bury the lead, which is, I really want to say, thanks Riley for getting out in front of this and bringing this before us. I'll sort of focus on the things I think that you guys got right. I like that there's not a discretionary permitting process for cannabis events that will certainly ensure the greatest, most streamlined approach. And I don't see any reason why they should be treated differently than other special events within city limits. And I did speak with the city manager, Miles Slattery, about that, just to kind of get an idea of what that process is. I also, I appreciate the effort at sort of consolidating, simplifying the permitting or the sort of uses and groups. And I think some things kind of that are, in my mind, important priority uses get kind of attached to other uses that might be more problematic, might need more caution or discretion. And by lumping them all together, I worry that we're not gonna streamline as much some of the assemblage of uses in certain cases, which I'll go over. And there are things that just aren't in here. And while I appreciate Commissioner Kraft's comments about aligning, you know, aligning with, and Commissioner Freitas' comments about aligning with state requirements and standards and distinctions, sometimes we just need to split it differently because it makes more sense. So for instance, there's an infusion license that, you know, isn't really spoken to. It would fall within the parameters of the code, but to me, I'd rather break that out and make it like really easy to where it could be treated akin to like a cottage industry. And it could even happen in a residential zoning district, in my opinion. But if we amalgamate it under a broader definition, then we lose the ability to kind of streamline that use. I'd be interested in hearing what the other commissioners think about that. We have in the county a concept where we group certain uses, and we call them cannabis support facilities. Many of those work, many of those fall within the general cannabis use as defined in the draft code updates. So support facilities in my mind include distribution, testing labs, central processing centers, nurseries, and what we call community propagation centers. Essentially kennels for mother plants where people don't have grid electricity and need a place to keep their plants under eighteen hours of light in a setting where you have electricity. So to me, those are uses that need, we need that, that's supportive of the overall industry beyond just city limits. And to the extent that it's hard to get those things online without major capital investments and we have, you know, kind of infrastructure that could be spruced up and brought into compliance, I'd like to see it, you know, streamlined in those uses because I don't see them as particularly problematic. For instance, distribution facilities, while there is an odor concern, but I think as Riley spoke to you earlier, we're seeing that there's some success in controlling odors. So in my mind, why not treat them exactly the same as a warehouse? And principally permit it in all the contexts where a warehouse would be permitted, just as a kind of analogy. And we may have achieved that through the current construction of the code, but we may be able to go further. And then I think things like cannabis, things like tour sites, those are a concept that we embedded in the county rules where anyone who is a licensee can host tours if they meet certain criteria. Like you have a place for an ADA accessible van to park and a turnaround and whatnot. So just building that into where anyone can be an appropriate site, you know, meeting certain criteria, but not requiring any further permitting, that would be something I'd like to see. There's also packaging and labeling. There's a type P license, which is to me pretty minor kind of cottage industry kind of things that somebody who maybe grows in a remote location in the county but owns a house in Eureka could potentially solve some of their issues by using their existing, you know, home as a place to do that type of activity. And I'm not, I don't want to be naive about what code requirements could trigger. You know, it's not always as simple as it seems. But to the extent that from a land use perspective, we don't get in the way and require much process. Let's see. I think chemical cannabis extraction, I would like to see some distinction between, to me, the greatest risk lies in highly pressurized things like supercritical CO2. And then of course hexamethane and propane types of extraction. But ethanol in my mind is pretty minor. And also, so having that distinction a little more fine would be, would be, will allow me to kind of feel better about streamlining some of the mechanical versus a chemical, but maybe not making that distinction. So overall, I think my interest and what I'd be interested in hearing from other commissioners is, it's really going further, you know, basically like making it easier where there's agreement about the most priority uses, the things that the city's uniquely able to offer. And we may have gone about as far as we can go. I talked to Riley briefly about this and told him I would look at the code a little closer to see if there's any places where there's still some more wiggle room. But you'll see that there's a lot of Ps on the table. Basically principally permitted use is not subject to discretionary, it won't come to us, it won't even come to the zoning administrator. It's just, there are some uses that don't land in the current construction of the code, like the ones I talked about. And then there may be some zones, for instance, office residential or in the coastal zone, the CW. Let me check my notes here. Yeah, not waterfront commercial. But maybe the, you know, the OR zone might be a place where some additional uses could be entertained as a principally permitted use. But I'd be interested in hearing kind of thoughts on that, you know.
There's a lot to unpack in that. Yep. I'm like, I don't even know where to start with that, I'm gonna be honest. I'm generally receptive to the direction of breaking out infusion and type P licenses to cottage industries. But I guess my question, Commissioner Lazar, would be, do you have specific recommendations for staff of what to change that we can provide to them? Because it seems like you're not necessarily to that stage yet of actually proposing changes to the code. Is that correct?
Well, I didn't want to be presumptuous. This is a public hearing for us to have a chance to deliberate as a body and see where we lie. And so it wouldn't be, you know, appropriate for me to offer more than that. But I have thought through some of it. I don't have it totally pinpointed. But it lies in carving things out or inserting things that aren't currently there where appropriate. And there's some key policy questions about some of the mixed-use zoning districts and what use is. If we just take them up use by use and think about, do we want this to be subject to discretion or do we not? And I think we can kind of, and we would also want to have the land use maps in front of us at that point to think through that. But I have been looking at that.
You know, if I could, real quick, Commissioner Lazar, just hitting a couple of your points. We are, under our current code, OR, you can only do testing facilities there, and same with waterfront commercial. So we are taking both those districts and we're allowing them to go up to general cannabis, which is most of the license types that we've just demonstrated. So we are proposing to expand pretty substantially in those two areas. And then also, when you were talking about like a shared mother facility type concept, you know, a couple of our cultivation permits are just nurseries. So if you squint this right, you know, that is happening. And also something like infusion, to do it at a home, that could get sticky because of, literally. But when I go into some of these places where they're doing infusion, making edibles, some of those are the stinkiest places to visit. So I think the odor control might become an issue. And I think that's why originally, like council directed us not to allow too much or any real cannabis activities in residential zones other than personal use. So, you know, I just, sorry, that was a couple, few things there that stuck out in your comments, but I know I didn't hit them off because my memory is not that good.
So I guess, yeah, one, just to follow up on that is, you know, I am not a cannabis code expert. I know Commissioner Lazar has had some experience in this. So I, yeah, I'm not sure if we can address all of those comments and get to a point of being ready to recommend approval tonight. But that being said, you know, I trust your judgment on it and would generally be supportive of, you know, exploring what those recommendations could look like if we want to ask staff to bring it back next month with some of those changes. That's my personal opinion on that, if that's what you were looking for from the group. Are you thinking that people are gonna be left out? Because it sounds to me like Riley's saying that it's vague, kind of almost for a reason, that those things are kind of being lumped into the general use. Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, that's certainly one way to solve it, is to say, oh, we don't have it in there. But it's close enough, you know, we can make the call. But, you know, where there's, you know, staff never likes to be in those positions, I know. And when you can anticipate it, it's always appropriate, you know, to parse things where you can, where you can. And some of these are concepts that are somewhat new, like the propagation centers and things like that. But they're reasonable to expect that they'll be necessary. They're not, you know, pie in the sky things or anything like that. It's just, if you think of the land base within the county and the needs of the industry, the county's unincorporated areas are not necessarily going to be able to furnish the lands that are able to do these things. There's just a variety of like logistical things that come up, like not having a water or sewer connection, not having electricity, being on roads that are really bad, you know. It's just, or being far away from where people live and make it difficult, you know, for practical reasons. So thinking about, you know, trying to fill that void and repurposing commercial and industrial lands within the city limits where appropriate is just, that's the essential thrust of where I'm coming from, is where we can go, where we feel comfortable and what we can kind of anticipate and accommodate.
Do you have a specific list of those things that were left? It sounded like you had a pretty good list. Is that something maybe we could throw back to staff for them to consider to add in, as you're saying there are more, there are newer uses? So maybe they've just been overlooked at the city level?
I can certainly enumerate them again. I'd be interested in hearing from Commissioner Benson too, just to see if there's kind of general support for the concept of teasing some of that out or adding it where appropriate.
And don't forget about Commissioner Kraft, too.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Sorry. I was just working down the, yeah, thank you. Yes. So maybe, would you like to speak for that?
Sure, I'll just give my two cents on this. I'm all for increasing the inclusivity to the economic engine of cannabis to, you know, to the most micro scale as well as, you know, the larger, the larger producers. But I'm also looking at this as cannabis code update. You know, we've been hearing from Riley for the last year, sort of, you know, where things are going. And there's, you know, been course corrections and minor adjustments made, and now we have a new one. And I'm not, I'm also not opposed to supporting this cannabis code update tonight, knowing that there will probably be another one in the future as, because we're in the growing pains cycle and that this is kind of, I'd like to consider this a living document that we're continuing to test drive and continue to learn from and add to. So if we've really missed things that will be egregious not to add, then I think we should put it back to staff and wait a month. What's a month in the long term with this? But if it's, but if those are things that might be good to test drive what we have and see if those are even problems or missed opportunities is also another way to go about it. And I'm kind of fifty-fifty on that, to be honest.
Have any, do you have that list?
I do. I think Commissioner Kraft wanted to speak on that.
So I find myself kind of going back and forth and agreeing with what I'm hearing here from Commissioner Benson. The, you know, this code is substantially better, in my view, than what it replaces. And so I would love to see it move forward. I have one note to add, which is, I would caution against equating cottage industry and the infusion and packaging licenses. When I joined Papa and Barclay, we had a packaging license at a facility where we were putting a million dollars a month through it. It was pretty high volume. It had the potential to be pretty odoriferous. It had the potential to be a security issue. So the lower-level licenses still can be pretty high volume and in the way the police look at it, high risk. But I'll go with the, I'll kind of go with the wisdom of the group on whether we move forward tonight or whether we say another month is worth it to get a few more things right.
I guess just to speak to the timing, I mean, I can only recall tonight as being a meeting where we were given a chance to provide feedback to staff. I mean, and from my perspective, it's the first meeting of an update that I'm sure has been in the works for some time, as you said, Commissioner Benson. It's just, to give just maybe a counter to that would be, for instance, when the county updated, when they first adopted regulations, there was, I think, ten meetings before the planning commission in a two-month period and another six meetings before the board of supervisors. A little different magnitude, a little different scale, but an equally robust effort, you know, the second time around when there was amendments to the code that were comprehensive. So to me, and I'm not looking to do anything approaching that, but to give more than one meeting to something where we have an opportunity for, you know, dialing it in, you know, because opportunities don't come around that quick. you know, because opportunities don't come around that quick, you know? I mean, we've, we've had these in place for, you know, five years now, I'd say, right? So it's not like we, if we think of that interval, we may not see it, I mean, another two, three years would go by. So to the extent we can hang, things are appropriate. I'd like to see us do that. But I'm not, uh, but I do want to say I share a lot of your feelings about these changes are useful and will improve what we have. And I don't want to get, have that get lost in the, the feedback and discussion points I raised.
I have a feeling there are a lot of events that are eagerly, um, anticipating the approval for this, knowing that some important dates are coming up and the warmer weather's coming up. So that's why I'm wondering if you have specific things that you'd want to add in there, can we maybe hash some of those out tonight? Or do you think the list is a little too long and cumbersome?
I think I could boil it down. Let me see.
That's a great point about the events.
Yeah, our community needs the, the economic boost that those could provide and certainly th- those are coming up fast.
Oh yeah, we're providing them, yeah. We've, we've had events in Humboldt County just, you know, for two plus years, since 2018. You know, we had our code updated to have events, but it's a far more onerous process, requires a conditional use permit and a planning commission hearing. So you're, if we adopt the code, even if it's a month from now, it'll still be far more streamlined than anywhere else in Humboldt County. So there'll be a, but yes, so getting to the question of, so I think I'll take the easiest stuff first. The, the, the things that don't exist currently as I see it is the infusion license. It's not differentiated from other, uh, extraction types. I think it should be, um, treated differently and I think it should be principally permitted in nearly all cases. And I would entertain if we want to look at the zoning chart, oh, my thing turned off again. We can certainly decide on which ones would be the zones we'd want it to not be principally permitted in if it were to be differentiated. But that would be one. The, um, as far as cottage industry, that could be taken up separately. But we could be presented with a draft of like, and, and what I would say is when you feel nervous and I take, and I appreciate what, uh, Commissioner Kraft was saying about just because the activity seems fairly modest, it could have a high volume. And so that's why it's appropriate to put sideboards in certain settings, like don't, you know, residential zones are not set up for large amounts of truck traffic. And so what we have, and I'd ask Kristen on this, is into the cottage industry concept, there's, it shouldn't generate volumes of traffic that are above and beyond what's customary to the neighborhood. So that's like something built into that concept in the county code. I don't know to the extent that that it mirrors it in city code. But that already exists. So these principles of like you, it should be indistinguishable from other uses of your residential property. And if it isn't, then it's inappropriate. It's not, or it requires discretion. Do you know, Kristen, is there something, a principle like that that we could look to?
So our code has both home occupation permits and cottage food operator home occupation permits.
And do they have performance standards similar to that where they, they restrict the volume of business you can do and employees and?
Yes.
Okay.
I know that the city of Arcata, they, um, make certain types of businesses like disallowed for home occupation permits and anything that has certain levels of noise or odor are also prohibited, you know? So those kind of safeguards are in place. Be a shame to see somebody complain and get their home-based business shut down, but maybe they won't need to. Who knows?
And, and one other counter, what I was thinking is there's been a lot of home, home businesses of indoor cultivation within city limits, you know, historically. So this is, uh, but, uh, I digress. Okay. So, um, let's see, the, so it would be nice to see that parsed out and given a pathway that's, is generous as possible as far as lowest level of discretion principally permitted in the greatest number of settings. Cana tourism, having some language that talks about, because I can tell you within the county, uh, rules, a tour, a tour operator can't visit your site unless you have explicit authorization from your local jurisdiction. So, you know, I'm sure there's a way that Riley or someone in the department could, you know, try to solve that by interpreting the code a certain way. But if it was pretty clear that if there was, meets certain standards, it, it can have tour sites, you know, tour or visits by tours. I'd like something explicit about that. It could be just a single line in the code. Well, but it could be, uh, an indoor cultivation facility, you know, that somebody wants to visit. These are opportunities for, and I also, I don't think we need to do it this time around, but having the ability for onsite retail outside of a dispensary context. The state doesn't really provide that currently, but I see that day coming and having that as the sort of, why would we not? You go to a winery, they have wine there that you can buy while you're visiting, but you can't really do that in the cannabis context yet. You'd have to be a dispensary as well as a winery and that's kind of crazy and most people aren't gonna make that change. But, okay, so back to what I, what I term cannabis support facilities are distribution, testing labs, central, I'm calling it central processing centers. And, and I want to define that. So that's essentially not attached to a cultivation operation, but a place where cannabis can be brought and processed by both a single entity or a variety of spaces like the foodworks or something like that, where people can lease space for a time so that they can process their product and get it down to the next link in the chain. So having places like that are essential. And then nurseries, I think are already treated in the code, but I see that as essential. And, and then if you guys, the community propagation center, I don't really, I'm not gonna push too hard for that, but that's the, the place where you can keep mother plants under eighteen hours of light, even where you're not, it's not at your farm, it's offsite essentially.
Hey, uh, Stephen, if I can interject real quick, I think we're just getting caught up on nomenclature here. A lot of the stuff that you're describing, I'm fairly confident we're already providing, um, like processing trimming facilities. We allow that under cultivation, under distribution. I think we even provide it under non-volatile manufacturing. It's just kind of rolled into, to our, our types. And also like, um, currently with cannabis, uh, cultivation facilities, um, we have square foot limitations. With this new code update, those are going by the wayside. So I think a lot of cultivators are hesitant to have nursery space because they want to use it to make money, you know, have flower. So I think by loosening up that, that part of our code, I think we're gonna see a lot more of, uh, of people having a cultivation facility that also has a nursery, um, because why not? They would expand their business, uh, in another way. And also infusion, um, it's basically, uh, for our non-volatile folks, you know, we have people that are doing infusion, but it's just under the heading, we call it non-volatile manufacturing. So I, I think whether it's the county or the state or the city, we, we all have different names for things. But, um, it sounds like for the most part, these things are getting covered.
Well, but, but Riley, once again, when it's lumped in with general cannabis uses and we don't allow general cannabis uses outside of mixed use or industrial zones, then it's covered, but it's largely omitted in the cottage industry context because the zones where we provide the pathway don't, don't exist. So that's why I'm saying the lumping together loses the opportunity to kind of facilitate it within certain guidelines.
Sure, sure. Um, I mean, we also need to keep in mind that, um, I, I also wanted to point out that while it seems like this might be the first time it's going before you, this cannabis code, it kind of was on hold for about a year and a half or so. But before that, it was really intentionally brought before the city council and we had a, a working group. So it, it definitely has had a lot of eyes upon the code and the text. So I, I just wanted to address that point. You mentioned it earlier, like, you know, maybe this was the first time it was getting, it might be the first time that, you know, it's coming before you, uh, with a chance to comment, but it's definitely had its, uh, it's, uh, many eyes on it previously. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Sure.
And also, um, yeah, we've had, you know, direction that, uh, it doesn't seem like there's a great desire to have cannabis activities in residential zone. Just because like I mentioned before, it, you know, when you are doing infusion, there's definitely aromas associated. So, I mean, how would you envision that working? We, we would go out and inspect the house and make sure they had all their proper odor control and security measures, uh, for a residential house or?
It wouldn't be any different in my mind. The facility would have to meet the standards for odor control, whether it's in a residential context or in a, an industrial one, you know, the same principles, but, you know, cause no one gets to generate odor under our rules. I think I heard you loud and clear on that. So it's not.
Correct.
So that's not a change in like how we approach it. It's just a need for, it may not be practical, which is an entirely different question. You know, maybe like that's a major investment for a homeowner to punch a hood in that with a carbon filter that they otherwise don't have. But, you know, in some situations it, it may be practical.
I mean, also, uh, you know, right with odor control as our security measures. And, and one of the reasons that, uh, you know, we feel that our programs work as well as they have to this point is we're, we're working in lockstep with our co- our law enforcement agency. And, um, I, I wish we could have them here tonight to comment, but I, um, that's probably some of the biggest improvements we have facilities make is, you know, putting a camera array in that covers everything and having, you know, security, uh, you know, systems that are pretty advanced. I, I just wonder, uh, how that would, you know, play into the cottage industry. It seems like it might just be, I don't know, it might, it might be a little bit, uh, much for, for a cottage entity.
Yeah, the, the license, I think it's a thousand bucks if I read correctly for infusion. So, and it could be making soaps, it could be, um, doing tinctures.
Oh, you mean with the state? Sorry, when you say license, that.
Yeah, the state license. Yeah. So it's within reach for a lot of people, but it just may have some logistics that have to be, you know? But if we don't have a pathway or we don't, you know, even consider it, then it's off the table, you know? So that's why, entered, introduced in it, in settings that may not have historically, um, been considered. So I guess the, the, and once again, when I, the list of uses I gave, and I hope, I don't know if you got it for the cannabis support facilities. To me, it would be making them principally permitted in the greatest number of, uh, settings. So you'll note that general cannabis uses, which would encapsulate a lot of those activities that where they're actually explicitly enumerated in the draft code, are conditionally permitted in office residential, office and multifamily residential, and, uh, also in hospital medical. And then in the coastal zone, it's, uh, conditionally permitted in waterfront, commercial as well as office residential and a minor use permit in neighborhood, commercial. So those would be the places where there would be, you know, possibility for reconsidering that under this, for those, that subset of the general cannabis. I'm not saying indoor cultivation. I'm not saying large in- distribution. Not saying extraction using, you know, volatile or non-volatile compounds. Those are not what I'm saying to onboard. The, the subset of the general cannabis uses that are, that I've just classified as cannabis support facilities.
So if I'm understanding what you're suggesting, basically for infusion and for cannabis support facilities, it's kind of like shaking out the general cannabis use for the things that really could be in an even, you know, less extreme category and be allowed in more places, including potentially residential for infusion at least.
Yeah, I think infusion's the only one I'm looking to visit zonings that aren't currently on the table. The rest of them would just be making them principally permitted where not currently principally permitted or subject to a minor use permit maybe in, in cases where we want to go with a use permit.
I think I heard Riley say that council was pretty clear that it, they're not gonna allow it in residential areas. I'm just wondering if we're.
Well, as shown, it would be inappropriate because we're not, we're not distinguishing, you know? That would be allowed, that would be opening the door to things that would be problematic. I share that, that concern. But we're, I'm just saying by splitting out uses that are potentially insignificant impacts, you know, at certain scales and within certain sideboards, to me that is a distinction worth considering.
I agree, and I think if the council doesn't like it, they can just choose to not take it up. You know, there's nothing wrong with putting it out there and seeing if they want to revisit it based on more detailed information. So I'm not against it. But for the, for, for the support services, we probably would need a definition of what that entailed.
Well, I did try to list it off. I don't know if Riley, if you've caught that, but I did try to list off the types of uses that I consider to be those critical infrastructure.
Yeah, yeah. And, um, the, the thing I'm envisioning is possibly, um, right now we have, uh, part of our, our awesome security measures. We have, um, everybody fill out a form explaining how much different type of product they're gonna have, flower, trim, um, extracts onsite. And I can tell you before I get, once they get to, they're not very much for Humboldt County, you know, that you're gonna be in the high-risk level and according to our matrix and according to, you know, the work we've done with our law enforcement. So once you get to that higher risk level, that's when the maximum kind of security measures kick in. And, uh, so I just, I, I see kind of, that might be my, my butt heads with your concept, uh, Commissioner Lazar. I don't, um.
Help me understand, cause the, the security measures just mean that maybe you have a lot more cameras, maybe you have a greater amount of like heavy-duty doors and, you know, things like that. Those are capital investments you're facing, but it doesn't change the context of the use. It's just the investment in the site and the necessary improvements that you have to undertake.
Right, right. Yeah. And right now, you know, the stuff that you're talking about, um, is principally permitted in zones where, you know, we foresee them having a great quantity, uh, because they're areas that are medium to heavy industrial, you know? Old, old warehouse type facilities that, uh, I'm, yeah, I'm just trying to work through it if we're like talking like a offense residential, a mixed-use zone. You know, I think we probably want to have some kind of, uh, level of scrutiny if, if we're gonna put something in that, that area that has a, a potential security issue or a higher risk. I'm just, just off the top of my head.
Well, you, one way of the approach is to offer some, some thresholds, right? And to say beyond a certain amount, right? This is the distinction we make between ha- you know, high risk and medium risk. And high risk can't be principally permitted, you know, in the, in the borderline zoning districts, you know, that are sort of on the bubble. But I've looked at your guidance on that, I'm, you know?
Well, yeah, that's a tricky one. I know what you're trying to, I appreciate what you're trying to accomplish here, get something even more streamlined. And, um, I feel like this, this version of the code is a, a dramatic improvement. And, um, it seems like, you know, having, uh, to go through a use permit process maybe isn't the end of the world. But I, I see what you're saying. You'd like to even make some paths even more streamlined. I, I appreciate that.
I would like to, to make, make a motion that, that I would hope would, would move us forward with the cannabis code changes that, that aren't in dispute right now.
I still, I have actually some items too I want to discuss, so just FYI, if you're trying to make a motion right now.
No, then I'll, then I'll wait on that. But I, but I am prepared to make a motion that, that forwards the, the proposed cannabis changes that, that we've reviewed tonight, but also puts out a recommendation for city councils' ears relative to some of these other potential cannabis support services and license types that aren't included.
I think it's good to keep in mind, right, that the council can't take action on the ordinance if it doesn't look like the one that we saw. So it, it, you know, if it, if they change things at the, you know, the final stage, it's gonna be back before us to review unless they're very minor in nature, you know? I mean, I could be wrong, but that's usually the way it's supposed to work, you know? We're an advisory body. We're not gonna adopt the regulations. We're gonna provide a recommendation. But if we're not actually looking at what they ultimately adopt, it's a little more tricky. Please feel free to tell me I'm wrong. I, yeah. So, you know, I, I get what you're saying, like, let's get it moving on and like, we'll just finish that other stuff later. But it could ultimately get in the way of moving forward.
If that's the case, I'd, I'd, to be honest, I'd rather try not to work out all those details tonight. I'd rather see it be a working group or that we, that we table this for a month and, and give you a chance with your. I'd rather see it be a working group or that we that we table this for a month and and give you a chance with your cannabis experience to have more interaction, you know, with with this and something that we could see a a new draft of, um, you know, in a month, because it's it's a lot to work all this out tonight.
I agree, and I think part of it too is that, you know, it'll take us a month to get it back. But that could save multiple businesses the months that they would take to wait for their use permit if they don't really need one, you know, so it could still end up being beneficial for businesses in the end. If we just direct staff to come back with a slightly modified draft and, yeah, it is mostly totally on point. So can I go into my comments? Are we? Yes, okay. So the first one was actually a Commissioner Lazar special, and I was shocked I didn't hear it tonight. Which was the energy, the like a hundred percent renewable portfolio? Are you still interested in exploring that or have you given up on that one?
No, I'm glad you brought that up, but it is becoming quickly a moot point because of the state regulations have uh evolved to the point where by twenty twenty-three forward, there are requirements for carbon offsets for people that don't already purchase renewable energy. So whether we take action embedded in our local regulations or not, you're not gonna get a state license in certain activities, indoor, mixed light tier two. And I think something else, like someone maybe you can step in. But yeah, they're they're gonna be tackling that regardless.
Okay, and I guess that's, yeah, kind of the challenge of trying to stay ahead of what's happening at the state level um with all this stuff. Okay, so that one is good to go. Um, I also wanted to suggest something. I'm not tied to it, but I know we had talked about this at a prior meeting about the timing of having an approved security plan. I don't know if you guys remember that conversation. But this would be the time to make that more clear at what point we needed to have that in place before before operations. There's a section on page two twenty. Oh, wait, no, sorry. It's page eleven and twelve of the standards, so we're looking at pages two twenty-eight and two twenty-nine of the packet where there is a security section. And a security plan is subsection four. And so they have it on here, and I guess I would suggest just a really basic change to it to put in timing either prior to use permit approval, or if that didn't capture all these businesses that would be principally permitted, maybe prior to certificate of occupancy. Or any any other suggested timing that seems appropriate to staff or to the commission.
And prior to initiation of use. That way it's not, it's just not tied up with anything else.
Yeah, I can uh just chime in uh that no one gets issued a license until their security is uh approved by our group as it stands. I I know it's probably not written up accurate or written up in the code like that, but um that's the way it plays out. And state won't issue a license and like I mentioned before, until we issue a license. So um there's no way anyone can be having any cannabis onsite until their security is completely done.
I think what this is illustrating, sorry to jump in, but I it finally dawned on me reviewing it again ten today, but there's a do- there's a sort of dual process. You have your permit processed through the planning side of things, and you have your license that's issued through the city manager's office, correct, Riley? The local license, I mean. You've got you've got two different things, and they both there's two different sections of the code, and the license, you could get your permit, but you don't have your license yet. You're not gonna get your license, is what Riley was saying, until you got your security plan in place. Is that wrong?
No, um, I don't sign off on the cannabis license. Cannabis permit, whatever you want to call it, um, the little thing that they put on their wall that says they're legal to operate. We don't sign off on that until our cannabis review panel, which consists of myself, building, code enforcement, police, fire, public works, until we go out there um and we instruct the applicant, when you're ready to have cannabis onsite, if you're, you know, some kind of facility like that, or if you're ready to open your doors, if you're a retail facility, that's when we come out and um and so we do a final cannabis review panel walkthrough, and then we will sign, if they are up to speed, we'll we'll sign off on their license. Yeah, good.
Uh, can I just add, in the application, it it covers all of those processes. So there's like, there's the code, but then there's the application process that everyone goes through, and in the application is the odor control plan and the security plan that both have to get approved. So it it seems like it's disjointed reading the codes, but um going through the process, it's like you go through the application that tackles all these things, and then once that's approved, then and you have your final inspection, then you're able to operate. That's helpful.
Okay, yeah, no, that's very helpful. I just feel like we had a conversation at the planning commission where it wasn't clear when the plan would be reviewed and approved, but it sounds like actually there is a pretty clear process for that. Um, okay, so my last point slash, you know, area of concern um is the idea of temporary events in parks as a specific subset of um city facilities, and I could, you know, be talked away from this position, but it just kind of doesn't sit right with me to have cannabis, um, you know, in parks, similar to having alcohol in parks. Um, I just see it as an adult activity, and not all parents want their kids around it, and we want our parks to feel safe and inclusive. And, you know, there already is a requirement for cannabis businesses to not be located near the schools. I'm assuming it's for the same reason. I would I would request that we break out um parks, or at least certain types of parks from city facilities, and we could always add it back in in future if these events all go great and staff recommends it based on their experience with managing these events, but I think that's too big of a bite to take off right now personally.
Yeah, I think something like Halverson Park, you know, might make sense, right?
Right, yeah, big, open air, no playgrounds.
Except for a playground would be probably delineated from an event. So like at Carson Park, we've done beer festivals, and so would you, I mean, there there already are alcohol events on park. Sequoia Park Zoo, for example, does a legit martini festival and a beer festival. So I don't see, but they are limited to twenty-one and over. But I'm thinking like Carson Park, you know, you could delineate at the at the basketball courts, that that would be the cannabis section of the event, so. I see what you're saying, but I would disagree.
Yeah, and Zootine and other examples are a totally fair perspective on it, but for right now, I just feel like it's too far of a reach personally.
I I I think that you're right, Delo, um in that uh they're not analogous. Um cannabis isn't, you know, holding a drink doesn't doesn't give a kid a drink, but secondhand smoke is a real thing, and it's not gonna be controllable in an open air setting. Having said that, you can't get a cannabis event permit, license from the state without clearly delineating the perimeter of the event. I mean, it can't be ambiguous in any way. And it requires fencing and security checkpoints, and nobody gets in except for people that are, you know, legitimately able to to attend an event that are the right age. But that doesn't change that if it's in close quarters, if there's no local guidance about putting it right at the boundary between this transition of publicly used facilities where you could have theoretically kids in the vicinity, but just just on the outside, I mean, that could be clearly inappropriate in some situations. So this is our chance to implant that at the local level and and distinguish and provide, you know. Now, on the other hand, the the city manager's office does get to coordinate this before it ever gets approved. So it's like, do we entrust, do we trust that they're gonna make sure that anything like that will get teased out? I mean, that's that's my hope. Um, it certainly be, and I think Commissioner Craft had his hand up earlier, but I I didn't want to give him a, were you waiting to speak?
Yeah, it's interesting. I had my hand up for a long time because I forgot to take it down, but now I do have uh something to say. I I hear the reticence about the parks. I, you know, I think the idea of cannabis events is exciting, and there should be some uh outdoor component to that. And, you know, my mind went to Halverson Park as as a really good place for something like that, but, you know, a pocket playground kind of park, not uh not appropriate. So um I'd hate to lose it entirely from this draft of the code. Uh, but I could see either naming parks or naming a little bit more uh buffering or uh, you know, guidance force city manager and staff as they're implementing uh the cannabis event stuff. Uh, but I would be quite interested in keeping it in and you know, I'm a home brewer. I have poor beer across the way from Six Rivers uh doing stuff in public parks. I think it can be managed. Um, and, you know, just needs to be enough air around.
And I think just a comment also, uh you know, uh folks on this commission have probably done some code writing. I think you're never gonna get everything under the code, but um so I think when we talk about city facilities, city properties, you know, we also include the catchall that it has to follow state guidelines, and then the final catchall of, you know, city manager approval. You know, so I think it's a fine line. You don't want to write yourself in too tight, so you don't have any flexibility. But um, you know, I just wanted to point out that I think there it's nice to have uh a little wiggle room in your code. You don't want to to totally uh identify everything. If, I mean, if you can inaccurately account for everything, that's great, but I'm sure, as you guys well know, that lies, therein lies the challenge, so.
Um, I'd like to make a comment that I I appreciate being part of a commission that has um such capacity to to really look at 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 these codes and 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 think about it through many lenses, and I I I'm going to recommend that we table this um for, you know, for this evening and give us all a chance to relook at um at the at the cannabis code as presented to us and and really find those those items that are already going to be covered in some part of the process and really find those items that that are really not represented at all and make some recommendations um to to staff for that, and it may take a uh it may take a month, you know, for, you know, for that to happen, but I um principal planner gets, are we allowed to send to staff email recommendations on changes to code so that we don't wait for a month, and then Riley gets all this and and he's got to think about it right on the spot that he that he gets that in advance? What's our mechanism for providing some written input for what some other items that could be adopted into into the um the cannabis code? How do we do that?
Normally, that happens at a public meeting so that the public can hear.
Right, right. It's tricky.
I, from what I understand is we can individual commissioners can communicate with me individually. Um from what I understand, maybe I've been giving some bad info, but uh.
Well, I mean, maybe uh maybe a solution would be if, you know, different commissioners sent things to you, but then you essentially compiled them into a list of discussion topics so we could at least hit the ground running. That way you weren't trying to actually incorporate any of it into the draft unless we said so here in this public meeting, try and find ways to incorporate this into the draft. But that might save us a little bit of time. If you're like, well, I received these, you know, five suggestions, let's go through them and vote one at a time. I don't know if that would save time or not, but that might be a way to split it down the middle.
I think that could be acceptable.
Especially for Commissioner Lazar, it might give him time to think, think through some of that stuff um and how it could be put forward. So um I feel ready to make a motion if nobody else has any comments for suggestions to staff.
Well, I do have a comment. I just, I think that there are already a lot of redundancies in here for the state code, and it not's been referred to a lot, like, oh, we want this. Well, it's already required by the state. I I don't have the time to go and and match all that up on my own, so to me, it just just feels like we're gonna run in circles, and most of the things that have come up have already been mitigated either because it's already required by the state, um or it's already included, and unfortunately, I can't make a motion to vote, but I'd like to see this just, you know, to move forward, to get it going, to get some of these things streamlined, to get some of these businesses up off the ground that have been waiting for permits and waiting for some of this to happen. I'd like to see it pushed through, so um I'm just trying to figure out what exactly you're hoping is gonna come out of another meeting and further discussion on it.
Well, I I haven't weighed in, so so I brought my ideas up so that we could provide direction to staff, and they can do the work, and then provide us the information so we can take a decision at the meeting where they can get it to us. So I wasn't looking to be ambiguous about what we wanted. It was to take the pulse of, you know, the commission and then provide guidance to staff to 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 make changes or even not necessarily make changes, provide provide alternatives that we can vote on, and then those alternatives could be presented to the city council, and they may vote differently, you know, but at least that provides a broader improved uh suite of options and policy choices for the the council, you know, to to vote on and not to to drag this out. But I mean, really, like, this is the first meeting. It's a ordinance of importance to the industry, to the community. It's not being reckless to to take more than one meeting to make code changes, especially five years after the first code was adopted. So to me, if we feel, you know, you have to, the question I'm asking each commissioner is do these seem like important uh things to to consider including or or uh refining? Or if they don't, then that's a fair, you know, thing to to say. I don't I don't want to see it. It doesn't really matter to me. It doesn't seem important. But if it does, then we provide the direction to staff so that they can present that in the next forum that we see maybe next month, you know, potentially. If we have, we have to see the timeframe, but and then we take an action. We make it, we 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 might not even vote for it. Maybe the things that we thought were a good idea, and once we see them, we get cold feet, and we go back to what we saw tonight. But that's all I'm suggesting, not any more than that. So I don't know if that changes, you know, I I'm not looking for like a long drawn out process. It was really to to see if we have any kind of support amongst the commission for refinements and uh and additions essentially, and then provide the direction to staff so we can take a vote on a different version of this.
I certainly appreciated all your specific points and the the different license types, because it is but I, you know, I didn't, then Riley kind of answered that question that it's already included in under these these use permits. So unless we're gonna start rehashing all those and then go through all those permits, which seems like we'd almost have to have a special meeting to do that rather than actually just at the general planning commission meeting, and full disclosure, I will not be at the next meeting, so you guys could hash it out and vote on it without me, and but if it if we're gonna pull it out, then it seems to be that a special meeting might be um warranted at this time because there's a lot of other things that would then have to be decided on at that time, too.
Yeah, I agree. Sounds awesome. I don't know if that was the answer you wanted, but that's.
Probably not, but I mean, I if you, I I can't, like I said, I can't make a motion. If Michael liked the code and he wanted to make a motion to vote tonight, we could try a vote and see if it goes through. I don't know where everybody stands, but um.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, you can make a motion.
I can?
You can.
Oh, I thought I couldn't make a motion. I think that when, yeah, I think Jeff always said he couldn't make motions.
That was.
Oh, it was his choice. Oh, well, that opens up a whole other, so I'd make a motion to to like make a motion then and see where we stand. Otherwise, we'll make a motion and have a special meeting, and we can move forward from there. Is there a, I can't.
I will second the motion.
There you go. My motion is to accept it as is. So.
That was my second.
Thank you. I can't find the the exact verbiage you might want, but I'll keep looking.
They've got it up on the screen for you.
Oh, there we go. I'll move the planning commission approve the proposed new cannabis regulations and recommend approval to the city council. Oh, there we go. I'll move the planning commission approve the proposed new cannabis regulations and recommend approval to the city council.
Second.
All right. Commissioner Freitas?
No.
Commissioner Benson?
No.
Commissioner Lazar?
No.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion fails.
Fair enough. Well, we're in pass.
So I guess I would like to make a motion that we schedule a working group meeting or whatever you call it, a special, a special study session um, on this so that we can work out the details um, and, and get something passed next time, or, or get something that we can vote on next time.
Do we need a study session though? I mean, maybe we do and I'm not against it, but it seemed like it really boiled down to a couple of things that they could maybe just bring back next month.
Here's a question for staff. Um, you know, Mr. Topoluski, do you feel that you got enough input from the commission to know what kinds of um, tweaks to make and revisions to make to this ordinance that might address some of those issues without a study session?
No. Um, I think I'm gonna need some one-on-one uh, time with specifically Commissioner Lazar.
Yeah, and, and maybe, I, I'd like to hear from Kristen. Could we just like create a subcommittee for purposes of interaction with staff on this particular matter and then the subcommittee and staff will, you know, talk through sort of the, the details that will essentially be represented? Does that seem like an appropriate use of a subcommittee, or is that kinda?
If the chair wants to appoint a subcommittee, she can choose to do that.
I'm, I'm happy to do that.
And does it have to have more than one person? Because I'm, I'm worried that it would only be me that wanted to do it, but I, if, if I, it's that.
The chair.
I can help with that if called upon.
The chair can either ask for volunteers or she can appoint somebody.
Okay, well.
Cannot be more than two.
It has, it what? Cannot be more than?
Cannot be more than two.
All right, I will ask for, actually, you know what? I'll just give him a point, two people right here to handle that.
I believe you were pointing to me and Commissioner Kraft.
Wherever his screens at.
Not me, no, not me. I don't want.
I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing any pointing, but I'm feeling it.
Yeah, good. You know, you were feeling it. I felt like I was looking at you right in the face, but I see that maybe I wasn't. Okay.
So I'm gonna make a motion, just so that like we have like clear, so the motion would be that the commission um, authorize the subcommittee to work with staff on refinements and, and revisions to the ordinance in line with our discussion tonight and to, and to allow those to be presented as an alternative to the draft that we have tonight at the next possible meeting. And that I won't make it a cer- will be renoticed so that the public knows, because I think that's important. So does that seem like a reasonable way to, so we don't lock ourselves into a date that we don't hit or whatever, but that's the general thrust. We wanna get this back sooner than later. Does that seem reasonable?
It seems reasonable to me.
It seems reasonable, and if that was a motion, I second it.
Okay.
I'm not even bothering. She can figure it out. Commissioner Freitas?
Hi.
Commissioner Benson?
Hi.
Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
I.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Just a bunch of dots.
Any more discussion?
Just wanna say thank you again to the staff and consultants that have been working on this. It is a, a very good piece of work so far.
I agree. Thank you.
All right, um, old business, new business, I think is where we're at here. Old business? None. New business? Sometimes you guys throw me a curveball. None? No. It is usually her. Um, all right, well, then we're adjourned.